Good evening, this is the Town of Victor's zoning board of appeals, call a meeting to order. Yeah, would you like to?
We will, we will start with the pledge, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation.
All right, so a few housekeeping matters. As you notice off to the side, your right and left, there are emergency exits. The restrooms are out in the lobby area. If you haven't done so already, please sign the attendance sheet at the back of the meeting room. There are also some business cards back there, you're welcome to those, along with the address, phone numbers for the planning department. The agenda is also back there, as well as the proposed resolutions for the applications for this evening. If you haven't done so already, please either turn off your cell phones or silence them so as not to disturb the application process itself. If you have any conversations that don't directly relate to the application, please take it out in the hallway. As we've done before, we have both applications, we have exhibits, we have them, if you want to use them, just let us know and Susie will get it up on the screen so we can take a look. If they're new, let us know that they're new, we'll take them, we'll look at them, we'll mark them accordingly and put them into the record. While you're looking at the exhibits, do your very best to use whether it be compass points or structures, instead of saying, if you notice over here, over there, that doesn't translate well with the minutes themselves, so just script them as you possibly can be. Also, if the board members are asking questions, please wait for the question to be finished and we will do the same for you, let's not talk over each other, again, that doesn't translate very well when it comes to Amber taking the minutes for us. We're always willing to help, ask questions if need be, however, there have been occasions that applicants may ask us for legal advice, we can't do that, you have to go and do that yourself. All right, with that, we can start, the next step is approval of minutes, the September fifteenth, twenty, excuse me, September fifteenth, twenty, twenty fifteen. Hopefully everyone has had a chance to review and I would entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Leah, a second.
A second.
Matt, any further discussion? Or none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
May I pose? Motion carried, thanks so much. All right, first is the, the, is it Mario?
Mario.
Mario, sorry, come on up, so you have some more information for us. So it's a quick update, just to get everyone on the same page, you have an existing ten by twelve shed located on the property line and in your development, five feet is required. And last we spoke, we asked if you'd be willing to get some estimates on how much would it cost to move the shed, and I think you provided it, so with that, go ahead, continue.
Yeah, thank you. So I did get a couple of quotes, I had the first individual that came out, sorry, I have my, two of my little ones.
It's fine, no, they're, they're fine.
So the first individual that came out, Mike Schellenberger, he is willing to attempt to move the structure up to five feet in from where it is, and then also said he would attempt to move it to the back of the yard. I don't really think we're in favor of that option, the quote is three thousand more for him to move it to the back of the yard, and really just kind of, you know, again, like I mentioned last time, cuts off a lot of the space that we use currently, so that, those are his quotes, and then had another individual that came and sort of said, I, I really don't even want to quote you on the job because I don't think that the structure is structurally sound, so I, I don't want to move it, I'll give you a quote to demo it, but I don't want to move it. And then the third individual that I had, Brandon, I apologize, I can't remember his last name off the top of my head, but his business is called Handy Bran, and he is willing to attempt to move the structure as well, up to five feet from where it is. His quote and kind of the details he gave me when we met were that, you can't guarantee that it's going to be moved successfully, I'd mentioned last time that it was, you know, it's a, it's a kit, it's a shed kit that my family and some friends put together, so it's not the, not the most structurally sound structure, it does the job of storing pool equipment, but it is not, you know, necessarily something that we can move around the yard a ton of times, so, so yeah, I provided those, those two quotes to Amber, thank you, and those are, those are the details we have at this point, I know Matt had come out yesterday, Friday, I can't remember.
Friday.
Friday, yeah, just to take a look at the, the yard and kind of see, you know, what it looks like there, so that's the, those are the updates I have for you.
Great, thanks so much for doing that.
Yeah.
Matt, questions, comments, concerns?
Well, yeah, I was out there on Friday, so I understand why you guys picked that location, didn't go in the back, just to kind of clarify one item though, with all the quotes in regards to the structurally sound, they're not actually making, like saying that the shed itself, they don't feel is structurally sound.
Correct.
They're saying, it's not really designed to be picked up.
Correct.
And then moved, so I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, sorry.
I do, I understand the, the position you guys are in, and it's a difficult position for us because I don't want to put a unfair financial burden on you, on the fact that none of the residents have come out also, like your neighbors that speak against it, taking in, but I don't really have any other questions, we kind of spoke when I was out there and I understand the grading and why you guys chose this, so it's just, that's all I really have right now.
All right, Larry, comments, questions, concerns?
No questions.
Hey, Leah?
Yeah, this is the more, more for Matt, when you were out there, was the grading in, like, in the back corner of the yard, was that like a sloped grading?
Yeah, it goes down, so they got the, they got the pool and then like the pool was built up, so then the ground kind of slopes down, so if you were, if I had a guess, if you're going to start from scratch, you'd probably do like a eighteen inch picture frame around to kind of build it up to get flat, depending on which way you were kind of pulling, pulling it from, and then the slope probably works best on an angle, so you'd have to play with it a little bit, so it would require getting built up.
Okay.
Yup, and then I noticed why for pulling it forward, you had like the pinch point with the big shrubs that kind of didn't look like it was in the aerial, but yeah, that's kind of what I saw out there.
Okay, okay, that, that, that's all I want to clarify.
You know, Leah, that's a good point, because I did ask the, the one gentleman that came that was willing to, you know, kind of look at the back of the yard, and he did say he felt that it was about sixteen to eighteen inches of, you know, the grade, and so it would, same of what Matt said, it would need to be, you know, kind of built up and, just depends on the angle and the exact placement that we chose to move it.
Let me ask you another question, if I may. If they move it five feet in, is that a problem?
From a grade standpoint, no, I, there's no issue from a grade standpoint because that section where the shed is was flat.
Okay, so they could move it five feet in?
What I noticed is there was more like a pinch point down with all of their shrubs and everything else, if it went forward the five feet, it would make it three feet wide, so that's why I kind of understood, that's why I understood why they pulled it, pushed it back the way they did.
Okay. All right.
Maybe it's a perspective from Matt, we were a little uncomfortable with how close it was to the property line, what's your perspective on that since seeing it?
It's, it's, it's right there, like there, there is no, so like when I left, I kind of went around to the side of the neighbors, like the fence is there, the shed is right there, like there is, like, it's there, so, but the fact that, like, I'm balancing the fact that if, I feel like if a neighbor didn't like it, they were, all the neighbors are noticed, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, but yeah, no, it's right there, like you, there's, it's right there, I'm up against the fence, yup, for sure, yes.
No other questions?
Okay. So my concern is, is the, this whole fire code, the intent of the code, why is it like that, is to keep those sheds away from each other, that should one go, you're not going to take the other one with it, and I have to believe, it's a fair guess, right, let me ask, if I'm going to ask the whole board, the fact that it's existing, I think is pulling on their thought process on, well, it's going to be expensive to move it, if you were going to ask for it today, I'm going to take a guess that each and every one of these board members would say, put it where it belongs, you know, you have it, construct it, is it fair to say, Pat, we'll go this way?
Yup.
Okay, so it is the fact that, well, let me keep going, Leah, feel the same way? The question being is, if it were a, a brand new, she okay? Okay. If the applicant were to build the shed today, would you be reluctant to allow the applicant to put it right against the fence as opposed to, no, there's enough, put it where it belongs without asking for a variance?
Correct, I would want the applicant to put it where it should be, not at the current location.
Right, Larry?
I agree.
By the same way, Matt?
I agree.
Okay, so you see the problem here is, it's that we have applicants from time to time, and I'm not, it's not a blame or pointing the finger at you, is they'll do something first and they say, oops, I made a mistake, and it's too cost prohibitive to move it, so that's a concern I have, I'm looking at the intent of the code, it's, when variances are granted, and we've talked about this before, they say they run with the land, they stay with the land, so you could be there for a year, ten years, twenty, someday you may find a different place to go and, good for you, that variance stays with the land, so if somebody else, either your next door neighbor, or decides to put a shed right next to it, now we have a bigger problem than where it is currently today. I'm trying to think if there was a possibility to ease the, the concern, put some conditions to it, would you be willing to not put any combustibles in that shed, reducing the, the possibility of fire hazards?
There already aren't any in there.
There's no lawnmowers, no gasoline, no fertilizers.
No, no, the only thing that's stored in there, we talked about last time, is the, the pool chemicals, and if needed, those could be stored outside of the shed, like in a secure deck box, they're all, the chemicals that we use are all in, like childproof, airtight, you know, containers, so that if they were to tip or fall, or someone were to get after them, they're not emptied, so that's, I mean, those are the only things that are in there that I could think could be a concern, but certainly, yeah, we would store those in the garage if needed, it's more so, it's more so that we don't have a place to store, you know, lawn furniture, things like that in the, in the wintertime.
All right, let me ask again, so if a condition were in place, no combustibles in that shed, how would you feel about that?
I, I could, I could get behind it, I'm, I'm just, I'm just uncomfortable with how close it is to the, to the property line.
Fair enough, Leah?
Yeah, I, I agree with Patrick, that, you know, I, I feel like the fire code piece of their comments, that really governs my, my decision.
Okay.
Fire safety.
Larry, where, where are you on that?
I agree with the other.
Okay, Matt?
I'd be okay with it.
You'd be okay with the conditions?
Conditions.
Okay, so if I hear Patrick correctly, you'd like to see the shed being moved away from, okay, got that, Leah?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Okay, and Matt, you're, you're seen to be, or tell me what you think about?
Well, in regards to conditions, would be, could be also, I'd mentioned it last time, put a condition that if anything happens to the shed, three branch falls on it or requires any sort of being rebuilt, that it can't then be rebuilt at the, because my, like, I don't want to put the, the financial burden on to move the shed, but then if something happened, then the shed had to get rebuilt, I don't act, I would then not want to provide, I would want the variance to go away at that point and not let them then rebuild the shed right back in the same spot.
Understood. I think there's more of us in the camp that the purpose of that code is really to protect not only you, also your neighbor, even though your neighbor hasn't said anything, it is, it does go back to the, your neighbor might be there a month, a year, you make it a new neighbor, and that new neighbor may say, I know, I'm playing the ifs and buts game a bit, but the, we have to look at the overall neighborhood on what could possibly happen if then the shed is right on the fence, now you have two sheds that are, could create a problem, and...
Would it be a possibility of, of a condition to say, if someone were to create something on the other side of the fence, that that variance would also go away, because again, I think just sort of a, knowing the neighbors and knowing the backyard as it stands now, someone would not be inclined to put something right there, right up against where ours is. Please stop. However, if they decided to do that, you know, obviously, that's against what we had, you know, what, not what we thought, so we totally can, you know, be flexible with that, I just...
I think it, it is a, a nice thought, the concern that I have, and I think the overall board would also support the, our code enforcement officers only have so much time, almost people power to go out there and to ask a code enforcement officer to police everything that goes on in the town, there just isn't enough time to do all of those things. While they do, they look at building permits and make sure, they, they compare it to the code, and do you need a variance or you're not, but to put that extra layer of, say, policing, of what would happen if, it's like, I, I don't, I, I would be concerned about that, about putting, we have a good staff, they do more with less, I, I would be concerned about that piece of it. Anything else you want to add, or before we start maybe digging into it?
Um, no, I don't think so.
Okay. I understand, and I think we all understand, the, the cost of, of moving it, that cluster development does have other sheds, and some variances happen granted, but not so close, not right on top of that, so whether it can be moved, it sounds like if you're going to move it, you might as well move it, you know, to five feet, so you're in compliance with the code, and then you don't need the variance anymore, that's, that's kind of the, the piece, so I, I'm not sure what difference it would make if you move it three feet, let me back up a little bit, we're supposed to grant the minimum variance possible, so if you were looking for, say, three feet as opposed to a five foot required, that would be something different, but you got to move it. Follow me, says, if you're going to move it, then move to five feet.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to move it, however, the, you know, sort of the logic behind why it's as close as it is, is so that there's space to, to walk, and also in case we did ever need something to come to the back of the yard for grading purposes, et cetera, it can't get beyond that fence.
Yup.
And I know Leah had mentioned last time too, like having it closer to the house made you more concerned with, you know, with it being closer to the house on the deck than the fence, so I, I don't know off, you know, offhand if it's a, if it's an absolutely no, it can't, you know, it can't stay where it is, I don't know that we would, you know, if we could potentially meet on three feet, but again, it's the, the, the cost is the same as far as moving it and the, you know, the, yeah, the, you know, having to kind of go down that road.
All right, so in these situations, when it is that all or nothing, we give an applicant an opportunity either to say, well, gee, I'm not quite sure, so I think I know how the board's going to go, because if you get an answer you don't like tonight, and let's say the board decides to deny it, there's consequences to reapplying for that same variance, there's a longer window of time, right? You could also say, you know what, let me think about it, other options, come back the next time, that's an option for you, or you could, I just want to withdraw it, because if you withdraw it, there's a shorter window of time to then reapply for a different kind of variance. Makes sense so far, or not, you want me to?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I, I think I'm not familiar if there are other types of variances I could apply for.
No, no, sorry, well, couching a variance, there's basically two kind of variances, there's an area variance and a use variance, you're looking for an area variance, a use variance isn't going to help you in this situation.
Okay.
But to look at a, a variance of either asking for two feet, one foot, three feet, four feet, I don't think it's going to make a whole lot of difference because you're still, to solve the problem, either you got to take the whole shed down and put a different shed up, or try and move it, keep your fingers crossed, and it, it makes it, and it's, it's, if you're going to do it, you might as well move it five feet.
Um...
It's, it's, it's a tough spot, I, I understand that.
I think what he's trying to say is, if you want to come back and go, you know, say, I want to do it four feet instead of five feet.
Okay.
If we turn it down, you're going to have to wait twelve months?
Uh, what, what is it, that, it's a, it's a year, so you have a year, if they're, denial, you do have a year before you can apply for another variance.
If you back out now and decide that you really want to be at four feet, not, not that I'm saying that the board will move four feet, and you have thirty days to reapply?
If she withdraws?
If she withdraws today.
Thirty days.
Right.
You can come back in thirty days and say, I want it at four feet, you know?
Okay.
Obviously, the message is, you got to move it anyway, probably.
Yeah, so, if I, okay, I'm, and I'm trying to think out, like, figure out timing wise of like when, how quickly I have to have someone come and move it, regardless of how far that is, is that like a?
That would be, if that is decided that that's how the board wants to go, that would be part of the condition.
Okay.
We would ask you, how much time do you need?
Sure.
It's not going to be a year.
No, no, yeah.
It's not going to be six months, it, it has to be some reasonable amount of time to get the contractor and pick it up and, and move it, but what I'm thinking is, if you pick it up and move it to the five feet, then you really didn't need a variance, you could have done that anyway without a variance.
Right. Okay, so I think probably then I should talk about it with the contractor, just to get a better idea of timeframe and see, you know, kind of map out exactly what it would look like if we were to do three, four feet instead in the same spot, just because I really don't think that the, I, I don't, it, I had mentioned last time, it just wouldn't make sense, like the cost to move it to the back of the yard will cost more than purchasing and building it, so that doesn't make any sense to me to do that, I would just take that one down and, you know, redo it if we needed to, but, okay, let me, then that's what I'd rather do, is talk to them and kind of figure out the next, you know, viable option.
Sounds like a good option.
Yeah, thank you.
Our next meeting is when?
November third would be our next meeting. Okay, thanks.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
So, members of the board, good to see you again, my name's Charlie Gottlieb, I'm the land use counsel for Chick-fil-A from the law firm of Whitman, Osterman, and Hanna in Albany, New York, here this evening with Randy Beebaut, our project engineer from Bowler Engineering, as well as Christine Bianchi, our project traffic engineer from TY Lin. Our project, to refresh your recollection, is a five thousand three hundred and ninety-seven square foot Chick-fil-A, which is a quick service restaurant with a dual lane drive-through that wraps around the building, it is in the southeast portion, let's see, we can use this one, southeast portion of the Eastview Mall project site. We last appeared before your board last month, we had a total of seven ZBA applications in front of this board asking for area variances and waivers and so forth, we received your comments, we hope that we responded to a lot of your comments in our most recent submission, but more importantly, we're, we're happy to report, we have reduced our request for relief, and in doing so, we have reduced the requests to what we feel as though is the, you know, the least amount of relief that is necessary to allow the project to proceed. The remaining variances that we are requesting are vital to the project, to the project's success and moving forward with the project. We have eliminated and reduced the following variances, we've gotten rid of the canopy sprinkler waiver, so there is a requirement in your code that canopies, even if they're not in gas stations, have to be sprinkled, the fire marshal issued comments noting that they could be exterior sprinklers from the wall spraying underneath the canopy, so our project architect has integrated that into the design, so we no longer need that waiver. We've also revised the project lighting for the American flag, it was previously lit by a floodlight, which is prohibited by your code, so we've now proposed an accent lighting, which I believe has been referred to the code enforcement officer and is compliant with the code. Probably most significantly to your pleasure, I would imagine, we've gotten rid of the monument sign on Route ninety-six, so that is now gone, that does however stress the need for some of the other wall signs that we're proposing. We've also gotten rid of variances on the northern elevation of the project site, which is actually the entrance, so if you remember, the building is oriented in a fashion that it fronts the ring road of the mall and not the actual legal frontage along Route ninety-six, because our access to the project, of course, cannot be from Route ninety-six, it has to be internal from the Eastview Mall, so we've gotten rid of, we, related to the northern elevation, we confirmed the elevation length of that northern elevation, and the proposed signage is within your code requirements, so we do no longer need a variance there. We've also gotten rid of the signed variance on the western elevation, we got rid of all signage on this western elevation. So I, I'll summarize our submission briefly and then I can ask question, or answer questions and so forth. A quick update from the planning board, so on September twenty-third, the planning board, they are the lead agency under SECR, this is an unlisted action, so they issued a negative declaration, which is a finding that the project and the variances will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact, that now frees up this board and the planning board to start making their actual determinations. The planning board also formally approved the amendment to the no build area restrictive covenant that's on the project site, so if you remember correctly, most of this area up in here, this is preserved by a restrictive private covenant between the property owner and the planning board essentially, we are disturbing some portions of that no build area, or the previous no build area, I should say, the planning board has now formally amended that covenant area, so we are no longer in the no build area. Going through and how I structured my response, realizing this is somewhat of a complicated matter, I went application by application, so I'll briefly go through each, stop me if I'm talking too much, stop me if you have any questions.
What I'd like to do, just so we don't get too much in the weeds on the wrong thing at the wrong time, each one of these applications, there's going to be a separate resolution for each one.
Okay.
Right, so, and I believe that they're in order of, whether you call it importance or the, being critical, because for example, if you, if we granted a variance on application six on one or more of those signs, and then we go back and look at the green space issue, and you didn't get that one, it's a bit of a domino effect, you, you got to have, it sounds like that first one needs to come first because the rest of them really wouldn't matter too much if you get them or you don't, is that fair to say?
Absolutely.
So let's start on application one, focus our questions, comments. Focus our questions, comments, your presentation, and then, once we get through that, we'll go through the resolution, and if it's successful for you, then we'll keep moving forward. Can we do that?
Sounds great.
Sounds good. Thanks. Go ahead.
So, ZBA application number one is related to open space requirements. The Eastview Mall cluster subdivision requires 35% green space within the project site. With our project, the entire project site will be 34.3% open space, green space, where the 35% is required. Back in 2007, a previous area variance was granted related to open space, allowing for 34.6% open space. So we're really just reducing the open space on this Eastview Mall project site by .3. You know, to, I'll highlight again, although I don't know how much weight it has with this board, there is the hotel project. If that hotel project is constructed in conjunction with our project, there will be a net increase of green space on the site. At the last meeting, the board asked whether or not we tried to, within the Chick-fil-A lease area, get to that 35%. I don't think this is the, or should I be pointing this at? We could skip through to, about seven slides in. It doesn't appear to be working. Maybe you have to turn it on. So it's Exhibit A in the packet. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. This is the actual lease area that's identified in the red boundaries. So it's not the total area of disturbance. It's the Chick-fil-A control area. You'll see the green highlights there. The lease area is 1.3 square, or acres. 25% of the lease area is open space. As you'll see from the lease area, this isn't, this is a very tightly-designed boundary that really just is the operations of the Chick-fil-A. As you can imagine, they don't want to lease more area than they need to. Likewise, the property owner doesn't want to lease more area than they have to. So that is the design. That is the open space that is within the actual Chick-fil-A lease area. The board also asked at the last meeting, if you could just go to the next slide, we talked about, so we went through a very long process with the planning board as to where this building should go. Originally, the building was pretty much all in this green area. There was no proposed movement of the ring road. The planning board wanted as much as possible to get this building out of this green area here, more towards this underutilized parking area. So the project was shifted as close as possible to this line right here, which separates the Eastview property from the actual Macy's property. And we did confirm that is a separate fee simple owned lot, owned by an LLC, a corporation affiliated with Macy's. So we moved it as close to that line as possible, trying to utilize this existing impervious surface, as opposed to this green area. So those were the questions we had on ZBA application number one, the open space. To the extent this board has any questions about it now, we're happy to answer.
All right. Before I open up the questions to the board, emphasizing the hotel project and the relationship to the Chick-fil-A project is speculative. It's niffs and butts. It hasn't happened yet. Chick-fil-A's space, uses of space, it has to stand on its own. If the hotel gives space back, great, it's a win-win for everybody, but it needs to be understood that that is really irrelevant as it comes to Chick-fil-A. All right? Let's ask a question. Do you want to, first, second?
It doesn't matter.
All right. Let's go this way. Patrick, go. We went that way last time.
I'm going to look for Mike a little bit on my question here, but is there, is explored any, or is it reasonable to think about exploring, do you have to be bonded? Does Chick-fil-A have to be bonded in situations like this for reclamation? For example, they abandoned a building, like a letter of credit, like something that could be drawn on to reclaim the open space?
If variances are granted in this instance, it's going to stay with the land. So, and I think for the amount of space that they're looking for, the invasion of the green space is arguably minimal, and it's, taking into consideration, they've worked with our planning board, they've reconfigured it, they've turned it.
Yeah.
And I think, even though a variance is already been granted, looking for a little bit more space, I think they're doing what they can do with the spot that they want to be in.
No, that's fine. That was my only question.
Okay. Leah, questions, comments, concerns?
With that open space that you're taking, are there going to be any trees or any shrubs there that are going to come down in that area?
So, that's probably a question I'm going to have Randy highlight for you.
Because when I drove by, I thought I saw, you know, maybe one or two trees in that area.
Good evening, Randy Beebaut, Bowler Engineering. So, yes, as part of this project, we are removing some trees. We provided to the planning board a summary of the number of trees being removed versus the number of trees being put back, which we are putting back, I'm going to say it's about five or six more trees than were being removed. On top of, I mean, we're in the hundreds of number of shrubs and things that are being added. In addition, we're enhancing the island when you come in, and you either go to VJ's or you come to the mall. We're actually enhancing that with a bunch of new shrubbery also. That was part of the, working with the planning board on other enhancements that we could make to sort of offset, mitigate the green space loss.
So the tree, you know, you mentioned you're going to add, you know, like, five to six trees over what's being removed?
Yes. So in other words, we're taking down 22 trees, we're putting back 27 trees.
Right. But those 22 trees, that's not just on, I'm going to say north, on like, the south side? That's around the whole perimeter?
It's within the green space. It's the trees within the green space that we're impacting.
Yeah.
But everything outside of that light green, which is, the light green sign defines the disturbance area, meaning this restaurant sits low to the road, so we'll be sloping up. Where that light green ends, everything outside of that, we are maintaining. We're not removing any trees that are not within the, you know, outside of the disturbance.
Correct. And the trees that you're going to then be planting, I know you mentioned, and I see some green, like, in the parking area, and like, that medium, are any going to be replaced, like, close to the, you know, close to the green space?
Yeah. Actually, and what doesn't show on this plan, there is, there's like, three or four trees, and I might have it on the hard copy plan, but there are some trees that are planted at the top of that new slope, on the Route 96 side. But yeah, they're not, it's, they're kind of dispersed between being in the parking lot and up on the slope.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Larry?
I have a mathematical question, and you probably could answer it. What is 3/10 of a percent in, or feet, or acres, or?
Point. So I knew that, I knew someone was going to ask that question. And I got it. I will have that answer for you, because I just got to go back to what we based it on, which I think was about 93 acres, I think, is the mall area that we based it on. So I will, I will get that answer for you.
I can comment. It's not an exact number, but it was about an acre.
Yes, that's correct.
When we did the math, it was approximately one acre of green space.
That's the only question I have.
Just want to address Leah's question real quickly. There is, we did provide a landscape plan that does show the trees that are being added in the area of disturbance.
Oh, okay. What drawing number is that? Just so I can reference that.
So, yeah, this, for some reason, the trees weren't plotted on there, but you can see here the trees.
Yes.
So these are the new trees that are planted on the slope.
I think the question Leah was asking, it's C-201A. What's the, to mark which?
201A. Okay.
Matt?
One question more for us as the board. Can we condition the variance that if Eastview Mall does another project, that then increases the green space back up to say that 35.1, that the variance then goes away? And they couldn't say, because they're mentioning the hotel, I know what, one doesn't have to do with the other, but saying, in the future, it could get back up to 35%. If they do get there, then this variance goes away, and they no longer can say, "Well, in the future, let's come back with a different project," and drop it back down to the variance that was granted for Chick-fil-A.
That's a good thought, but no one here is representing Eastview. They're here as, as a tenant. So someone from Eastview would, for that parcel, would have to say, "Yep, we're good with that." Could we do it? You know, and I think without going back into what I'd said about five minutes ago, even Eastview, I think, is probably going to say something like, "Yeah, we're going to put a hotel, and we're going to increase the green space, and it's all going to balance
What I would say is that you wouldn't need a condition like that, because it would go away by operation of law. So if you, if at one point this project site has over 35% green space, those variances are meaningless. And so if someone comes in later, like, let's say Chick-fil-A's here, the hotel's here, and someone wants to come in again, they need to come for a variance to get under the 35%.
Even though a variance, as you said previously, runs with the land, it would actually be at the 34.3.
But it's only for the land that they're on? The variance is only related to the Chick-fil-A land?
No.
No. It's for the whole mall?
No, it's the whole, with their, if you, there's, a diagram. It's an odd-shaped parcel. So what council was submitting, there it is. And it's, it's not a great look at it, but part of what Chick-fil-A is, the property that they're leasing is only a part of the whole.
Then is the variance then actually going to only, is, we're only looking at the tax parcel then that the Chick-fil-A is on, and it doesn't actually relate to the rest of the mall then?
Right.
Okay. So this actually has nothing then to do with the other whole?
That's why with the council was, that's what council was saying, is, is that with the hotel going up and the other part of the parcel increasing the green space, therefore, it's a wash. And it's actually...
Okay. I think I...
All right?
I'm going with, yeah.
Accurate enough, I don't want to put words in your mouth. All right.
It's a tricky situation.
It would have been simpler if it was a nice rectangle, or...
It would have. Looking at that is tough.
Okay. You done with your questions, Matt?
Yes, I am.
All right. A couple of things, and I think it's going to come multiple times. In your, your application one, and I think it continues on, you cite some case law, friends of Shanana Gunks.
Chuan Gunks, that's an eastern New York town.
It is, right, because it's a third department case, right?
It's a mountain range by New Pulse in North Ste. County, world-renowned rock climbing.
So my point I'm trying to make, and for clarity, is that's a third department case, and we are in the fourth department. Correct?
Understood, but I won't get into the applicability of legal precedent, but you can defer to your counsel.
It matters, though. I'm not trying to push on it too hard on it, but it's important for the rest of the board. I'm an attorney, I understand it, third department, fourth department, there's precedent. What counts would have been more helpful if it was a fourth department case, or a court of appeals case. Doesn't mean that it's irrelevant, it just has some, it doesn't have as big a punch as it would have been if it was a fourth department case. That's my point there. There are other pieces that I think we touched on before, and I think it's worth noting, that there was quite a bit of work that Chick-fil-A and our planning department did on the location, the original, I guess, compass direction of where the front was, and the green and all, green space. You did quite a bit of cooperation on trying to put it in the best space possible, and that needed some green space for the taking. This is .03, plus or minus one acre. County planning board, they're only looking at the signage, so we don't have to worry about that. The, give me one second, I'm looking at my notes. So tell me a little more about this, this no-build covenant. How does that work, and can you give us a little more on what that means, as far as granting or denying a variance?
Sure. So, it really has no applicability to your balancing test, right? Your ultimate test is, the areas, the variances must be granted if the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the community. Then you have five factors that...
Where did you get that?
That's New York State statute, town law. And then you have the five balancing factors to ultimately come to a conclusion of that question. We wanted to highlight the no-build area, one, because this was one of the biggest issues we faced, quite clearly, and it took us a year and a half to work with the planning board to find the right building location. And I wanted to bring that up to this board's attention, because one of the things you have to assess in your balancing test is, did we look at alternatives to reduce the open space that were disturbing? And we certainly did. Initially, we had the building right in here with access to the ring road. That was a significantly higher number of open space disturbance and open space loss. About a year and a half with the planning board going back and forth in work sessions, ultimately decided, put the, push the building as close as possible to the Macy's line, using this underutilized parking area, to limit the disturbance of this open space to the greatest extent possible. So it's really a demonstration that we have looked at several, several different alternatives for this project, and noting that the planning board formally amended this no-build covenant shows the hard work we did with the planning board, but also the planning board's acceptance of the project's location and orientation.
Okay, great. What's the total acreage of just the lease space that Chick-fil-A wants?
That is 1.35 acres.
The number that we heard before, the, approximately one acre, that's not the lease space, that's the whole space going back to where the proposed hotel would go.
Yeah, that's a...
I just want to make sure that, I think I understand it, but for the rest of the board, it's, you're not looking for, versus double the size of green space needed, you're looking for the whole.
Correct. So that is, that number was the .3 of the entire project site that we're reducing in green space.
Almost the entire site of your, or at least two-thirds of the site of your Chick-fil-A is taking up green space?
No. Let's look at it, I think, look at it differently. Give us a number on just the lease space that you, that you're looking at, and how much green space are you going to invade? Understand the question, it's, it's not, I appreciate the whole, and I think, Larry, it's an important question on how much green space are you looking for, and it's about an acre, but what about the lease space itself? How much green space are you going to be invading?
Well, I think the question is, how much of this area are we taking away?
That's it.
Okay. Randy, do you have that number?
Run up, so we can hear the record.
I'm going off the drawing here, that was submitted to the town. So the entire property area, Adam, chime in if I'm saying something that's not correct, is 186 acres. That's, that's the mall, and that's what we based the green space on. And the change in green space was at one acre on the original, the original request that we were going to be asking, based on the original layout, was an acre. This current plan, the change in green space, is .3 acres, .33 to be technical.
Yeah, I apologize for the, he's right. When I, when we did it, it was in the previous location of...
So we've, we've lessened the impact by .33. So we've, we've lessened the impact by .66 acres of that within the...
I think what everybody wants to know is, we get the whole, that this is a, this is just a section of the whole parcel out at the mall. Chick-fil-A is not leasing the entire parcel, only a portion of it.
Correct, but that, the change in green space is within the Chick-fil-A, that .33 acres is within the Chick-fil-A lease area.
How, how much of that green space that we, whoever pointed to, are you going to need, or just the Chick-fil-A leased space?
I guess it would be the same number then.
Yeah, I'm saying it's the same, the impact to the green space is being done within the Chick-fil-A lease area.
Help me with the numbers. Here I hear you say, okay, the 3.3% is an acre, let's say, okay? But your whole project is 1.3 acres. Okay, so if it moves an acre, and your project's 1.3 acres, that means three-quarters of your project is the green space.
That's, that's my fault, Larry. I misspoke when I said an acre.
Okay.
And I rescinded that, that was based on the previous location before they moved it.
So what is three-tenths of a percent?
It's, in this case, it's .33 acres. The whole, the whole mall site is 186 acres.
Okay, now, I'm fine.
There's one-third of the lease area.
I just couldn't get the numbers to add up in my head.
So it's, what they need for this leased parcel is about one-third of an acre that you'll be invading, but you have also indicated that the trees that are coming down, you're going to put, of the 22 trees coming down, you can put 27 up, you're going to enhance that island by putting more shrubs and green vegetation. Is that accurate so far?
Yeah, and I just want to add some context, because I knew I had this with me, but I didn't have it when I was up here last time. So the diagrams that we provided to the planning board was this, which shows in yellow the trees being removed, and in green, the trees that are remaining.
What's their drawing number?
Drawing number.
I can hand this to you. Okay, thank you.
And drawing number C-101.
It was 20, I don't have that in front of me now, but it was...
Yeah, take it.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's 22 trees being removed, 21 are remaining, and then the proposed plan on the landscape plan, which is L-100. Just a quick snapshot, 27 trees, new trees being planted, 180 shrubs, 76 grasses, and hard to believe, but 677 perennials. So this is a pretty intense landscaping plan.
All right, on this piece, just this application, anyone who wants to be for or against the application? All right, let's go around again. Any more questions?
One clarification, sorry, not to keep going down this, but so to Matt's question originally around it going with the land, on page two of the September 25th letter, it references a prior area variance was granted on September 17th, 2007, to allow for 34.6. I think that's what Matt's question ultimately was getting at, is how, is that not, is that not relevant? Like, how do we ensure that that isn't, this area variance isn't referenced in 10 years, in 20 years from now?
When there's variances that apply to we together, or they're, they're, they deal with the same thing, or close to the same thing, they're going to be filed in the same area, so that if whatever going forward, whoever needs to find it is going to say, oh, okay, there was a variance back in 2007, there's one in 2015, and moving forward. So is that what you're asking, how do we know?
I think I...
That's where the mall sits now currently, right?
Yeah, and I, and I think a lot of it is just explaining to the board the history of the project, not so much utilizing it as like a basis of one of our arguments.
Okay, fair enough. That was the only clarification, I'm fine.
All right, good. Leah, more questions? You're good. Larry?
Will the new variance supersede the old one?
No, no, I don't think so. Well, that's a good question, because I don't know off the top of my head what that variance, if it applies specific to the space. Yeah, I think it would, because you're, you're looking at the same parcel, and now instead of what the old variance said, it's adding the .03% to it.
Yeah, and the variance we're requesting isn't a new variance from the old variance, it's a new variance from the code requirements. So really, if this variance is granted, the 2007 variance just is not applicable anymore.
Do we know, we don't know what was in the old, the old variance, though, whether there are any conditions?
We can find it.
We supplied it in our initial application to this board as one of the exhibits, it was related to the LL Bean development.
I think I commented on that as well.
It was your comment, so we don't have to look it up.
Yes, 34.6% to construct the LL Bean store.
There were no other...
What's that?
There were no other conditions or anything?
No.
Okay.
There was just one condition, it's Exhibit E of our initial submission, the only condition is that any lighting proposed on the building or in the parking lot adhere to the draft illumination code for the town of Victor.
Because it hadn't been adopted yet.
But it has been now.
Oh, yeah.
So there's no reason to have that condition on this.
The lighting is compliant with the code.
Even though, I guess what I'm saying is, we had, we had a variance that had that lighting condition.
Correct.
If this variance takes that old one and gets rid of it, that lighting condition goes away.
But that wouldn't...
Any reason to have that lighting condition now?
No, I don't...
For them or LL Bean.
No, because, because now the lighting code has been adopted, we would, they have to be code-compliant, or they'd have to seek additional variances.
Just want to make sure we check all the boxes. I'm good.
Okay, Matt?
I'm good.
All right, so let's go through some of this criteria, make sure we're hitting this all correctly. From what I'm hearing, and certainly if the board members want to add anything else to the criterias we go forward, we'll certainly welcome those comments. But if we're looking at just the land space issue, the open space, first criteria being undesirable change would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of an area variance. The justification being that Chick-fil-A has worked diligently with the county planning board for the most appropriate location at the site, or the amount of space being approximately .33 acres. The applicant, although they have a plan on taking out 22 trees, they will be replacing them with 27 trees, also at the island area with about 180 shrubs and additional landscaping. That is noted, more specifically, I forgot the drawing. Where's that identified? C...
C-101?
C-201A?
C-201A? Let's make sure we got this right, just so we have the record.
Was it the landscape plan?
Right.
Yeah.
There is C, C-102A, right? 201A. What is, I'm looking at now C-101, what is, what's the difference between?
This was an exhibit that we submitted applying the summary of the trees.
This is the trees to remove, but isn't C-2101A, doesn't that indicate what's going to be there?
No, that one doesn't have all the trees located on it.
That's a rendering.
Okay, so let's go with C-101 that identifies the trees...
What plan did you read the plant list off of?
I'm sorry?
What plan did you read the list of, you had the number of trees, shrubs, and...
That's on the landscape plan, L-100.
There you go, so that's what you're looking for, wasn't it?
All right, so let's do L-100, and also reference C-101. Okay, great, thanks for that. With that, it appears that there'll be minimum impact to the green space in the commercial Might be missing something. Would anyone like to add anything else to the first criteria?
Can we just say it's also in a commercially developed parcel as well?
Trying commercially developed parcel. Anything else? All right, hearing none, let's move along to the second justification. The benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Let's mirror what we put in for the first criteria, for the justification. Would anyone like to add anything else to the second criteria?
That applicant utilized the space allotted to them on this area. You know, I want to say that they did, did their best to maximize the most efficient use for that space.
That's what, we had talked about that in the first criteria, that they, they work with the planning board, and they have an informal approval for the location, and it seems that they had, I'm sure many, many meetings on where was the best location and the best compass direction for where the, which way it would have faced. Those, those should be able to be referenced in the planning board minutes. Okay, is that what you were referring to? Okay. Anything else on the third criteria? I'm sorry, we're on the second or the third?
Second.
Or the second, all right. Let's move on to the third. The requested area variance is not substantial, mirror what we have for the first and second, and especially given that, looking at the whole, they're looking at .33 acres for the open space, and, as indicated earlier, the replacement of the landscaping. Any additional comments on the third criteria? Fourth, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The particular additional use of green space, I haven't heard anything regarding any negative impact on the physical and environmental conditions, but anyone like to add anything on the fourth criteria? Fifth, the alleged difficulty is self-created, even though the council has indicated that it's not necessarily a pivotal factor to it, but it is self-created. Would anyone like to add anything on any of the criteria, or thoughts about conditions for this particular?
Well, I'm just wondering about one thing, because sometimes trees die after you plant them. You know, is there plan, you know, if a couple of trees die, will you replace them?
I do believe that the code, correct me if wrong, has a landscaping maintenance requirement with the planning board for, I'm assuming, a period of two years or so. Typically, a bond is put in place in the event that landscaping dies and it's not replaced, that bond or letter of credit can be drawn off of, but I, I believe that's typical planning board requirement.
Okay, so I got an indication from Adam that that's in place, so if a tree dies, you got to replace it with something like the, whatever vegetation is no longer here. All right? Anything else?
The landscape plan is an approved, is part of an approved site plan, right? So they need to comply with their approved site plan.
Keith, anything you want to add before we go forward? You're good. All right, I got a heads, a no from Keith. All right, with that in mind, I would entertain a motion for approval on...
Move to approve.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thanks so much, okay. One down.
One down.
All right, onwards. Go ahead.
Application, ZBA application number two, this is, so I'll use this. There's, the ordering canopy is right here, there's the meal delivery canopy here. Again, there is about an 18 and a half foot grade difference from Route 96 down to the project site, so there is a retaining wall spanning this outward limits of the drive-thru. New York State Building Code requires a fence be put on top of that retaining wall, so we have proposed a four-foot-high fence above the retaining wall. The requirement, there's the fence right there, because of this building's orientation, that fence is going to be closer to the front lot line than the principal building, and that's what we need an area variance for. We did provide a cross-section in our packet that, there, perfect, thank you. The fence is located here, Route 96 is up here, so you're not going to see the fence whatsoever from Route 96, given the grade difference, and it's purely a result from the, result of the orientation of the building fronting the ring road as opposed to Route 96. The only ZBA comment we got at the last meeting was, what does it look like? So we had the pictures up there a moment ago, that is actually from the Chick-fil-A location in the town of Greece.
Touched briefly on, why do you need the fence there? I know you said New York State, I'm a real softball...
Sure, so retaining walls, this is a great depiction of it, you don't want someone, whether they should be walking there or not, you don't want them to walk over the retaining That is absolutely something my son would do.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea for liability purposes, because, you know, somebody would be foolish enough to walk there, even though there isn't a sidewalk on that street, I don't really see people walking there, but you could get somebody doing something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let's go to the other, Matt?
I had a quick question, so the code requires the four-foot on the retaining wall?
No, four-foot exceeds the guardrail height that's required by code, so the code doesn't require a fence, it requires a guardrail because the retaining wall is greater than 30 inches. They're achieving the guardrail requirement with a fence.
Okay, so the guardrail would be like two feet or so?
It would, yeah, it'd be 30, 36 typically.
36, okay. I just had a quick, just on the code.
And the fence, the black aluminum fence is the same fencing that's going to be around the outdoor dining area and throughout the project site.
Looks much better than a guardrail. Does that add on anything else?
Larry?
I'm good.
Leah?
Oh, nothing else.
Yeah, nothing more.
Just for clarifications, we have it in our minutes, the county planning board doesn't have any issues regarding the fence, only the signage. Anything else you want to add?
There was one thing, just a global comment in all the resolutions, it identifies the application as type two, each one is type two, but you might want to put a provision in there that it's actually unlisted, and the planning board is the lead agency, so the zoning board doesn't have to do any secret.
Didn't we do that?
We did it already, I just, in the resolution, it does accurately reflect it.
Okay, we can put it all in there, thank you, thank you for that. All right, anything else? All right, anything from the public for or against the application? I didn't check with Suzie.
Nobody?
Okay. All right, so let's go through the resolution first. Undesirable change would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the area variance. Probably the most important part in here is that New York State requires this guardrail, but you're putting a fence in lieu of it, and it's really, it's primarily, it's a safety issue for pedestrian traffic. So law requires it.
Quick question, more for Adam, would the guardrail require variance or no?
Um, yes, because it's greater than...
Yes, because it's greater than two feet in height, it would meet the town's definition of a fence.
Okay.
Let's see, let's see. It's also worth noting, the applicant spent quite a bit of time and effort with our planning department on the specific location of the structure itself, partially creating the need for this application itself. Would anyone like to add or comment on the first criteria? Second, the applicant sought, excuse me, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Let's just mirror the justification for the first criteria. Anything else on the second criteria or justifications? Third, the requested area variance is not substantial. Again, I would mirror the justification for the first criteria. Would anyone like to add anything, comment on the third, excuse me, criteria justifications?
Should you, should you call it substantial? Because it's really, from an area variance standpoint, it's a fairly significant line of fencing.
It is, the...
It won't impact the ultimate...
Right, but the concern I have is, which really driving much of the need for that, our town code requires a variance because it's forward of the principal structure, but state law requires that the guardrail be there. So there, the applicant is, when you look at state and then local law, the state law's going to be local all the time.
Sure.
All right?
Okay.
Good question. All right, moving along then. Fourth, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions. It's a fence. I'm not hearing anything regarding any kind of physical and environmental conditions.
I would like to add that they're actually more creating this by eliminating impacting another, like acre of land, and they could continuously chase out the grade almost to Route 96, possibly eliminate the wall and the fence, and they're choosing to reduce the overall site impacts, less of an environmental impact by actually asking for the variance.
Okay, sure. We could put that in there. Let's make the note of that.
I should have made that argument myself.
All right, the alleged difficulty is self-created. Don't think we need any conditions on this unless someone wants to say.
I do have, I do have a question. I just want to make sure that we're addressing variance in the right way. Are there really two variances? One for them to have fence and one for them to go four feet?
No, there's not a variance required for height.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that at some point.
No, so fences are permitted in the commercial district to be up to eight feet tall. It's exceeding the required height for the guardrail, so it wouldn't require a state variance if that's what you were asking.
You might have been confused when he said, because it's over two feet, it meets the definition of a fence?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
No, it's all good. All right. You don't have anything else?
Mike, maybe I, could I just offer something for, I think it was the second criteria, or third criteria as far as substantial? The fence is still behind the minimum front setback for that district, the 80-feet front setback, where it's just an added justification, where typically if a fence is being requested for the front line of a principal building, it's actually, you know, requesting a reduced setback as well. And this actually meets, exceeds on the minimum required setback for buildings in that district.
So you would think then, how we're looking at this, it is a substantial ask? No. I'm not following that.
To say that it's not substantial, is that where you were to emphasize that?
Right, I think we're all in agreement that it's not substantial.
Right, and I was just wondering if that could be added to the resolution.
I got no trouble with that. The board is fine with it.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, hearing none. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Larry, a second?
Second.
Leah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Great, great, great. Thank you.
ZBA application number three, essentially similar concept to what we just did with the fence. This is the meal delivery canopy. This is the meal ordering canopy. This line right here is the front setback. So the meal delivery canopy, again, is an accessory structure that is closer to the front lot line than the principal building. I believe we are, the meal delivery canopy is 99.6 feet away from Route 96, where 80 feet is required. One of the questions at the last meeting was whether or not that meal delivery canopy is attached to the principal building, because then it would just be a part of the principal building. Our project architect informed us that there's actually a two-inch separation between the canopy and the principal building, and that gap is connected by flashing. So it's not structurally connected to the building, but it is attached to the building. So it would still require that variance. Again, a little bit about Chick-fil-A's drive-through operations. Drive-through operations are very critical to all Chick-fil-A's. They want to make sure people are moving in and out as quickly as possible, so there are no backups on the drive-through during busy times, which is most of the day. You will have team members out here with tablets, taking orders all the way up through the drive-through lane, and then team members here will be delivering food. That significantly expedites the drive-through process. These two lanes never merge into one. They are constantly flowing. And that is the reason for the actual canopies, is to protect the team members during inclement weather.
All right, for clarification, I think on what you just said, we're looking at two inches, and with the flashing being there, it's arguably connected, but it's really not. Is that accurate so far?
Yeah, it's not structurally connected, I believe was the term I was told.
And I believe, we've gone over, not in this particular application, but in others, one of those reasons, at least, for having a code that says you really shouldn't put anything forward of the principal structure is for obstructions. It's, I think, either in your application at some point, you're not going to see that canopy from the frontage of the building or from 96, or, so it's really not, the intent of the code isn't really being served by creating an obstruction. So just...
Correct. The canopy is 11 feet in height. It's slim, black aluminum, and the grade difference is about 18 and a half feet. So if you looked at that cross-section again, you would see that it's not visible from Route 96.
Okay. Let's get some questions and comments.
Real quick question. Are we just looking at the one on the east side and not the one on the south side? All right, okay. Just wanted to verify that. That's what I thought, but just wanted to make sure.
All right. Go ahead, Matt. You started.
I didn't, I don't have anything else. I just, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the application correctly.
Got you.
I don't have any...
Mind me why the other one doesn't need a variance?
It's not forward of the building, the front line of the principal building.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Yeah.
No question.
That's right.
No.
All right, I think we've covered that. Anything else you want to add? Anyone who wants to speak for against the application? Okay. First, undesirable change would not be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of an area variance. Applicant has indicated they're looking at technically two inches. However, the flashing does, well, not, and it engineers, it's not connected, it is arguably close to the, any potential obstruction is minimalized, which would appear to be the intent of the code. Would anyone like to add anything else to the justification for the first criteria?
Nope.
All right, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, justification being that the engineers have indicated that, well, it's only two inches away, it cannot be attached to the principal building. Would anyone like to add anything else to the second criteria? Third, the requested area variance is not substantial. Like when we're looking at two inches and the distance from the, from Route 96, I'm sorry, how far was that?
The grade difference?
Not the, that...
99.6 feet.
I'm sorry?
99.6 feet.
Would anyone like to add anything else to the third criteria? Fourth, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The structure being forward of the principal structure, we're not hearing anything that it would have any kind of adverse effect or impact. Would anyone like to add anything else to the fourth criteria? Fifth, the alleged difficulty is self-created. Anyone like to add anything or comment or consider conditions to application three? All right, hearing none. Entertained a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
Larry, a second?
Second.
Leah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Thanks so much. Now the signage.
Now the easy one. ZBA application number four, the sprinkler waiver that was withdrawn, so signage. If you could click one more page over, keep going. Great. So this, we'll start with the northern elevation. We've confirmed that we do not need a variance for the signage on this elevation, given the length of this elevation. You're allowed one square foot of signage per foot of linear length. So the elevation here is 128 feet, seven inches, and all proposed signage is 124 and change square feet. So we meet the square footage requirement here. We have the logo sign, the Chick-fil-A lettering sign, and the welcome Town of Victor sign. So if you could go to the next elevation, so here we have, okay, yeah, we can start here. This is the eastern elevation. So you'll see here, this eastern elevation, we need an area variance simply to have a sign on this elevation. This elevation actually faces Route 96.
It's labeled, I just want to let them know, it's labeled left elevation in your packet, not east.
Yeah, it's my fault. It's the sign company, when you're looking at the front of the building, it would be the left elevation. So facing 96, we have, if you could go past the sign survey, this is exhibit G in your packets. One of the things I wanted to demonstrate to the board is a view shed analysis of the signage, to show that there is no redundancy in what signs will be viewed and where they will be viewed from. And what's critical to the signage here is traffic safety. So we've gotten rid of the monument sign. So for those passing on Route 96 and coming in, I believe it's from High Street, coming down the hill, this will be the only indicator of the Chick-fil-A for those folks without the monument sign there. We talked to the sign design company, and the Chick-fil-A logo sign as opposed to the lettering was chosen in this location for a few reasons. One, it's smaller. But two, it is more easily recognizable from the naked eye for folks that are looking for the restaurant, but you've got to look through the trees we're adding, you've got to look through the grade difference that we're adding. So they see that red square with the chicken head, and they know, they know where to turn. We also provided an exhibit H of our recent submission, and this is vital to the southern rear elevation as well. A letter from Christine Bianchi, who's here with us this evening, who's our, our project traffic engineer, yes, this is the rear elevation here, talking about how vital this, these wall signs are from a traffic safety perspective. So if you look at the view shed analysis, it's highlighted in yellow and labeled C. When you are going northbound on 96, there's four lanes going northbound there, including the turning lanes. You want to be able to see this project prior to having to make your turning movement. Otherwise, you're going to have delay and potential conflict. Again, with the monument sign gone, these are the only signage that you'll see from 96 going northbound, as well as on East View Mall Drive.
If I could just pause you just a second. The, the area that you were talking about is C.
Yeah, on this map here.
Right. Those, what you're, that's in consideration for, or what's at issue, would be then the southern elevation, the two signs.
Yeah, so the southern elevation, same variance, signage is not permitted on this elevation, because we are not on a right-of-way or within a parking area.
Southern elevation, you need, you're looking for two signs.
Yes.
Eastern elevation, you're looking for one sign.
Correct.
All right, but both the southern elevation, no sign is permitted, and on the eastern elevation, no sign is permitted.
Correct.
Okay.
And on the western elevation, which is the right elevation of the sign survey, we've taken that sign off, so we've reduced that variance to nothing.
Hold on, hold on. I just want to make sure we're going to do this.
And one thing, and I'm going to have Christine say a few words about her letter, but one thing, after being at a few meetings, and I know this is a general concern of zoning board of appeals, is we don't want to set precedent. We don't want the next applicant to come in and say, you gave Chick-fil-A three extra signs. Where are our extra signs? But what we really need to focus on is the uniqueness of this project site. So we are facing the Ring Road for traffic reasons. We're not going to have access onto Route 96 or East View Mall Drive. That means our largest facades, being the southern and the eastern facade, those are on our streets, essentially. Those are, those are the walls that are going to be seen from those traveling. So right there, the property, the building orientation is unique, and would allow this board to say that we are unique, thus this precedent, if granted, wouldn't apply to other projects or other property owners.
All right, understood. We also have to keep in mind the county planning board recommended denial, so we need a supermajority for that.
Correct.
Okay.
So Christine, if you want to talk about the importance of a signage, because one of the county comments was the distance the signs can be seen, where they can be seen from and so forth.
Hello, my name's Christine Bianchi. I'm with TUI Land, and I'm a traffic engineer, and I did the traffic study for the Chick-fil-A. So you all have the letter before you that we provided regarding the traffic. We believe that the signs, primarily on the southern side and on the eastern side, are very critical for traffic coming from the south, and that, from our study, we looked at traffic patterns, and approximately 39% of all of the trips coming to the Chick-fil-A are coming from the south, so they're traveling northbound. So they are, as you're coming to the site, so they're northbound on 96, heading to the site. So if, I don't know if we have the, the view shed, but if we have a copy of the view shed, but I can show you on the view shed. So we believe it's very important as traffic is traveling northbound... So we believe it's very important, as traffic is traveling northbound, that they can, as traffic is heading north on 96, you get to this point, that's when you can see the signs on the building. And people who, well, I'm going to back up a little bit. Thirty-nine percent of the trips traveling to the Chick-fil-A are coming from the south, but of that, 50% are pass-by trips. And pass-by trips are people who don't necessarily put it in their Waze, or their Google Maps to find Chick-fil-A. They're not intending to go there, they're traveling, and they're deciding last minute that they're going to go to Chick-fil-A because they see it, or they're on their way to another location.
How are you figuring that out, that they're not using Waze, or CarPlay, or whatever it is?
Well, I'm not saying that they're not using it, but typically, if you're traveling, if you're stopping along a place on the way to go someplace else, like for instance, gas, you need gas, you see a gas station, you're going to stop and get gas if it's on your side of the road. But that's how, generally, for this type of use, there's been studies by ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers, that when somebody is traveling to a quick service type of food place, 50% of the trips heading there are last-minute trips. So that would entail somebody who not necessarily would put Waze in. So they may be traveling to the mall, or they may be traveling to Target, or something else, or may be heading up to Rochester, and they're traveling from the east, heading north, or from the south, heading north, and then they see Chick-fil-A and they turn in.
I challenge it, because it's no secret, it seems this whole community knows Chick-fil-A's coming, all right? And the technology that's happening now is nowhere near it was five years ago. More and more people are punching into the, there's things that my car can do, I still don't even figure it out yet. I now figured, I can push one button and talk to it.
Yes, yep.
Chick-fil-A, Victor.
Yep, and that's a great tool.
And it's going to take me there, left, right, and I don't need any signage, it just, I can almost let my hands off the wheel, it's going to take me there.
That's a great tool, but not everybody has that still. And I'm just saying that as far as a direct trip, we look at, from traffic engineering, we look at a direct trip, or we look at a chain trip, and we also look at a pass-by trip. So 50% of the trips heading to Chick-fil-A, we, actually, there probably will be more, but we were being conservative in using 50%, but we believe that 50% coming may not have it in there. So the decision point is very important for them as they're traveling north. So, but to your point, a lot of people do use Waze, and they use all the technology that, you know, is coming about now.
May I?
Oh, sure.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Have you driven out there?
Yes.
Okay, and you know, as you're coming up from the south?
Yep.
You go down?
Yep.
And then that's where the lane comes for the left turn?
Yep.
And then you're saying that your sign will be visible there?
So, so see this?
You will not see that sign even at the top of the hill.
So according to the elevations that we have, and the location of where the sign is going to be on the building, the sign is within the view shed of this area, C here, the signs on the building. But that is, that is still a short amount of time.
About the time you get in front of the Longhorn Steakhouse.
Right, right.
Is when you would start to do it.
So what?
It's going to be up that high?
I'm not the engineer, but that's what their view shed analysis is proposing. I was just giving you something to, because you're identifying landmarks, that building directly north of the yellow corner there, that's the Longhorn Steakhouse?
Right here.
And then there's the bank. So they're saying, basically, you're already at the start of the turn lane for the mall.
Precisely.
Right.
Precisely. So as you're coming up here, and you see the signs, you're going to make a decision, am I going to turn left here, or am I going to go up to the next entrance and turn and come in? Either way, you have to make a decision if you're going to go to Chick-fil-A, right? So we have a certain percentage of the people that know where they're going, and they're going to come up and make that left-hand turn, but there's another percentage of people that needs to make that decision very quickly.
I don't know where you're from, all right? Most people in this community, if they're coming from the south, and they want to go anywhere near that mall, they are turning in that entrance each and every time. Even to go to Home Depot is clear on the other side of the mall.
Right.
They will avoid all of those lights like the plague. It's like, I'm going to make a left turn in there, and the decision is going to be where that island is. Do I keep going towards BJ's and Home Depot, the backside of the mall, or do I make a right and start heading towards Macy's, or the restaurants, and things like that?
Right. And we did, we took all of the traffic that comes from the south, and we turned them into that first driveway. We were being very conservative in the analysis. But what I'm saying is that, once you get to this point here, there's a short distance between this and this. And if you, if you don't know where you're going, and you need to make a decision very quickly here, you have a short amount of time to make it.
And if you miss that first left turn?
You have an opportunity.
There's another one right down the road.
Precisely.
It's no big deal. And where you're showing, you can see the sign, you will not be able to see that logo, because also, it was mentioned earlier, extra trees are being put in, and with all those current trees now, you're not going to see anything. There's no way. And if, and if you're looking for a sign, and you're not paying attention to the traffic, you're going to get in an accident. People are not going to be looking at that. If they want to go, they know a restaurant is at the Eastview Mall area, they're going to turn there.
So what I'll say is a few things from listening to the conversation. One is, I don't think we're fully understanding the passerby element of this. Chick-fil-A restaurants, fast food restaurants, like gas stations, sometimes you do wake up and say, "I want a chicken sandwich, I'm going to put it in my GPS site," and I go. Sometimes, you're in your car, you have three kids in the back, and they're screaming, and they're hungry, and you're looking around for a place to eat. You're not intending to go to a Chick-fil-A, but you're looking around for a place to eat. So you need to be able to see the signage, so you can turn in. The worry also isn't that they're going to miss the turn and just go straight. The worry is that they're going to say, "Oh no, there's Chick-fil-A," and turn into that turning lane late. The other thing is, we're, I'm hearing, "We don't believe this, you're not going to be able to see it," so forth and so on. We're presenting topographical view shed analysis with a supplemental traffic report that has ITE-accepted engineering standards. If there's more information we can provide, great. But this, the signage here is absolutely vital to the project. I was driving around this afternoon, and I noticed Fleet Feet, two signs on the corner of the building. Longhorn Steakhouse, two signs on each corner of the building that are facing the roads. Chase Bank, two signs on each corner that are facing the roads. Simply the same thing we're asking here. If there's additional information, we're happy to provide it, but this view shed analysis really says it all.
I do, I have a little bit more, if I can add more to. Regarding Ashtoe, Ashtoe is, Ashtoe provides a green book, that's the, let's see, it's a policy on geometric design of highway, of highway and streets. So based on that, there is a recommendation on the length of time, based on speeds and roads, of what you need to like be able to see to make a decision to change lanes. So based on the speed of the road, based on the type of road, it's 800 feet. So given, you know, given where the view shed is, you want to be able to have people see before they make a decision, you know, you want to extend it as far as you can. So if they get past the building before they realize it's a Chick-fil-A, they may even miss the second entrance in. So that's really the need for the signs on the south side of the building.
And also just, at one point, Randy made a good point. The Eastview Mall is a destination. We can't assume that everyone that's going to this Chick-fil-A, or the Eastview Mall, lives in the town of Victor. If that were the case, there wouldn't be an Eastview Mall. There, I mean, I'm from Saratoga. My family and I travel here to go to the Eastview Mall. So there are going to be people that come to this location, that aren't familiar with the area, that aren't familiar with the turning movements, that most people go left on Eastview Mall Drive. And that's an important consideration as well.
I think what's causing me some problem is your language about the fact that it's at the beginning of the left turn lane, because...
The visibility of it?
Visibility, because the beginning of that left turn lane is much further down from the Longhorn. You know, I mean, we drive it all the time. And I don't, I just cannot believe, no matter what your science says, that down in that gully, you're going to be a scienceist up here that's down here.
You know, there is, and I'm just thinking of...
Further up, yes, further up, as you go up the grade, I can understand how you're going to be able to see the sign, but that's, it was the fact that you're saying that it's at the beginning of that left turn lane.
Mm-hmm.
That's throwing me off, because there's, I mean, go look at it again, I cannot imagine.
Well, there's also, and I'm just thinking of other information I can give this board to address concerns. That's a valid concern. In addition, there's likely, and Randy's probably going to kill me for saying this, another step above this view shed analysis of actually placing the building in some sort of computer-generated model, and putting a car there, and what are you actually going to see? We do that a lot with warehouse developments. What is your actual, not just the areas you're going to see, but what am I going to see if I'm standing over here? We can take a look at that. The other thing I'd ask the board is, some signage on that southern elevation, I'm telling you, is absolutely necessary. Whether it's two or one, we might be able to reconsider and come back to this board. If it's the amount of signage, that is the concern on that elevation.
I can see on the southern elevation, it, backing up a little bit, at the mall, Wilmerite, there's stores that have better exposure than others. When I hear the term that I, whether it be from Wilmerite, or it's a fiction that they're creating, destination stores, retail stores, Dick's is for an example, you're not going to find a Dick's like that anywhere within, I think about a 90-mile radius.
I think Albany is the next world of sports.
It's intentional, that's what they're doing. They want this mall to be the last one standing. Von Meyer, I don't shop there, but someone help me here. They're nowhere near, so Chick-fil-A, I think the closest one is going to be is Henrietta. It's by design, it's on purpose. They know, whoever wants to patronize the place, they know where it is. It's that magnet, if they're going to go right to it, they don't need a whole bunch of signage. And the concern, the other concern I also have is oversignage. Having some experience, usually traffic signs, if you put too many traffic signs on a road, a driver almost gets numb to it. You have to be careful about how much signage you use to get the appropriate attention that is needed. If you put, whatever, I think you kind of get the point here. So, once you start getting into that commercial district, you're asking for two signs on the southern elevation. Think, at least from my vantage point, it's not so much the visibility from 96, it's when you get into that loop, and when that island is either going to take you straight behind to that Home Depot, or you're behind the mall, or forces you off to the right towards Macy's. So having a sign there with, whether it be the logo, or the words Chick-fil-A, I can get my arms around that, one or the other. I don't think you need both. The trouble part that I have is on the eastern elevation, I don't see it. You know, it's covering your B area. To your point, you've said, you're by it. So what's the point of having a sign if it's covering that B section? You've already gone past it.
Well, it gives you the opportunity, so let's say you're going northbound, and you miss that turn. You see the logo sign on the eastern elevation, you know to make a turn into the northern access drive. Let's say if you're going southern, you miss the first access drive, oh, I got the pointer.
You're in the right lane. The further you go up 96, the further, and it's a bit deceiving, because we want, I think we're tempted to look at 96 being east and west, but it's really north. So if you're in that right lane, if you've missed that signal on High Street and the loop, the entrance to the...
You're going...
Right, right to left. You're further away from the mall, you're on the Longhorn sign, you're probably going to go by where Hobby Lobby is, and I think the likelihood of looking over your left shoulder and trying to catch a glimpse of, "Oh, I passed Chick-fil-A, there it is, I'm going to go to two or three other lights and go behind the mall," I don't see the functionality, the usefulness of the one on the eastern elevation. I can buy into some of it on one on the southern elevation, not two. That's my take on it. Patrick, what do you think?
Yeah, I would tend to agree with Mike on that. I think the, for me, you see them, you see Chick-fil-A all along the throughway, right? So I think there's one 12 miles east on 90. So the fact that it would be like people getting off the exit seems hard, so the passerby claim seems like it would be people going to the mall, or locals. So I think I'm just struggling a little bit, they're dotted along 90, they're not going to accidentally go for 90 to 96 and end up there. It just seems not practical.
Leah, what do you think?
I don't see the necessity for having a sign strictly so it can be seen from 96. People, and it was mentioned earlier, and I appreciate where it says, "Oh, if people might be in the middle or a right lane," and then they go cut off somebody to get in that left lane. I haven't seen that up here. I've seen it in other parts of the state, but here, I've never seen anybody cut, you know, cut across or make a quick left turn to get into the left turning lane. I don't see it.
I've seen it more than I'd like to. One thing I'd like to stress is, again, this eastern elevation is the logo sign, the red logo sign with the chicken head, not the lettering. That's, all of this is by design from our consultants. Again, added trees, added landscaping. You're going to see the red sign, and it's not like you're searching and you're searching. You don't want to be searching and searching. You're going to see it as you're going by. The other thing is, as you can see, if you're going down High Street here, that eastern elevation, that's the only sign you're going to see.
Well, I'll tell you, when I first moved here, there's a Panera, you know, a little further down, I don't know if you know where it is.
Oh, yeah.
There is no sign there. And when I first moved here, and it's a quick turn, and even still to this day, if I go there, I know it's quick, there's no sign that says you can get in. And I know, I have to slow down, and it comes up quicker than I want, but I get there. And I don't think I've ever missed it, but if I miss it, I know to go the next corner and turn, and I'll get there. I don't need the sign. I know in my mind, okay, it's quick, I have to get in. And then probably the first and second time, when I first moved here, when I didn't know it was coming that quick, you know, I made it and just was always mindful. And I think that's how people are going to be. If they miss it, they know they can get there again. But to Mike's point, I believe that, that most people who want to go to the mall probably make that left turn even to go to Home Depot, just to avoid, you know, the extra cars and the lights. So I don't think there's going to be a problem with people finding it.
Larry?
You three have said everything I have to say.
Okay, Matt?
Okay, I have a first question for Adam. If the Ring Road was public, would that allow signage on that elevation, or no?
Um, how did I analyze that? They don't have an entrance on the south side of the building, so they would not...
Okay, all right, it was just, it was the entrance, not the frontage?
Correct.
Okay. I have a little, I guess, different opinion from the other, from everyone else here. I understand the need in Chick-fil-A wanting to brand their building, they're coming in and making a big investment in our community, and I think it's in a commercial area, being the mall, I think having the signage, be able to get their customers to see, to get their building branded, I understand that. I travel for work a bunch, like I've gone to meetings, and I'm driving back to my hotel like half an hour away. I'm like, I don't know where I'm going to eat, it's like 9:00, 9:30, 10:00, and I'm driving, I'm like, oh, maybe there's a Chick-fil-A, or there's a Longhorn, or a Texas Roadhouse. So I understand wanting to have, have the signage, having the visibility. I've heard it from my wife as well, she'll be like, "Oh, I didn't even know that that business was there," because they were set back from the road or didn't have the signage. So I very much understand the need for the signage, from having the directional to identifying yourself to the public, and for honestly, kind of branding their building too. I get it, why they want it. I don't, I feel like it's in line with what's on the other elevation, because I believe it's the same size as the signage that is on the front, so if it was allowed, it would be within the allowable square footage, I believe, so...
Correct.
That also kind of, kind of went, I didn't think it was a huge ask, I kind of think the signage fits on the elevation, and I think they've spent a long time... and I think they've, they've spent a long time working with Victor, it seems like. So I, that's just my overall opinion.
Okay.
One thing, and, and we're going to come back with more information, but a few things I want you to think about before November 3rd. Another thing that the planning board did to the benefit of the project was make this the most architecturally enhanced and expensive Chick-fil-A in the state of New York. And, and I'm saying that because it's not going to look like a Chick-fil-A. It doesn't look like the other Chick-fil-A's that are in the other municipalities. So you're driving by it, and you think it's a single-family residence and not a Chick-fil-A, and so the signage is necessary. The other thing, and, and we're going to come back with more information, but to make a reasoned decision, I really stress on this board to look at the evidence that we're putting in front of you that is done by engineers and sign consultants and architects and traffic engineers. Yes, the town of Victor shouldn't be flooded with signs, but I think if we show some examples, and we show you some more indications of what you're actually going to be looking at, we should satisfy you. And I do hear you on the southern elevation, the rear elevation, that two might be too much. So we're going to take a look at that and see if we can reduce that.
Okay, so when I hear you, correct me if I'm wrong, on this application, on the signage, you want to come back with some more information for us and maybe persuade us into agreeing with your client that you need all those signs?
Yeah, I think we can hopefully move some things around and come to a compromise or, or something that ensures traffic safety, ensures visibility of the building, and most importantly, the economic success of the project. Because as you had mentioned earlier, we don't want the project to fail and have this building be here for nothing.
All right, wait, I, I, give me one second, I'll let you say what you need to. We've had issues before on, whether it be signage or structures, and, and safety kind of worms its way in there. It really isn't a great place, when you're looking at the criteria, start plugging in, "Oh, this is a safety issue." Is, you know, is it going to change the character of the neighborhood? Is it substantial? If you can find some kind of case law that says, "Oh, yeah, safety does apply to area variances." I'd love to see it. I have never seen it. So if you can find it, we'd love to see it.
It'd be a scary, scary world if it wasn't a consideration that this board should take to thought.
We'll take, we're going to take a look at all the evidence, facts in front of us. Leah, you had some comments or concerns?
Yes, I, I have one question. I need a clarification. Because when I was looking in your latest letter and also in the schematic drawings, on the southern elevation, you're asking for two signs, and I see it's listed as sign A3 and WS2. And when I'm looking at the anchor sign drawing, it says WS and A2. I don't see any A3. So I just want to clarify, I don't know if that's a typo.
It could have been, because WS is welcome sign, and that's only on the northern elevation. So I'll clear that up for you as well.
Welcome sign, okay. Because on this... See, on your anchor sign drawing, where, where you list the, the actual signs, you, you have A1, A2, WS1, WS2. And it's not, it's actually the first, the first drawing of, of your, you know, of the company anchor sign. Where you list all, all the signs.
I think...
Oh, WM is the welcome message. I'm sorry, not WS.
It all looks like it's correct, the way I'm looking at it. So I'm not, yeah, it's all labeled correctly.
Because in your letter, you did mention for southern elevation, sign A3. And I don't, you know, I looked through every one of these drawings. I didn't see an A3.
Oh, that must just be a typo.
Yes, so if you could please, you know, correct that.
I think A3 was what was previously on the western elevation that we took off.
So, yeah, you know, in, in future documentation, just clarify that, you know, where you referenced A3, that it should be A2.
Yep.
Just so we're all on the same page.
Perhaps when you moved the western elevation sign, when you removed that from the sign survey, it was most likely A3 on the original sign survey and is now A2.
That's exactly what happened.
On the revised survey.
I can see myself sitting in front of the computer making that mistake right now.
Because my comment, my comment also references A3, and that was based on the original sign survey.
So a quick summary then, what's your plan on, what are you going to provide for us for the next meeting?
So what we are going to provide for you the next meeting is, anything we can do to minimize the signage from this perceived over signage impact that I'm hearing. That is likely going to be the reduction of one sign on the southern elevation. But if Chick-fil-A is watching this right now, it'll probably get a phone call when we're in the parking lot. We're also, I'm going to see what we can do to get you some more information as to where you can see that southern elevation from the turning point. But if we're taking one sign off, I don't know how much of importance that is. But I would like to get more imaging for you and what it's going to look like from High Street coming down and Route 96 through the trees and with the grade difference and so forth. Because there's two schools of thought. One is, again, we want the logo sign there, because it's easily identifiable. But two, if you can't see it because of the trees, then why are we worried about seeing too much signage? So I think getting some more visual items for this board to consider will be helpful.
Right. Anything else from the board? I'm just curious, if you can't see it through the trees, why would you want to put it up and waste your money?
That argument works both ways. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you, man. Thanks so much. Safe travels. Anything else, the board? Keith, anything for us? No, we're good? Push it to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Favor?
Aye.
Great. Have a good evening. Thanks for working, everyone. Is this, who's this? Is this yours or ours?